Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the town hall. This is Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. It's a town council meeting. We will have the invocation by Alderman Boudreaux and the pledge of allegiance by Alderman Tomplay. If you'd please quiet your phones and stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as this Christmas season begins, we continue to thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon the residents of Abita Springs during this year. By our prayer and your service through you, we ask that you draw us together in unity and that our praise and worship of your echo will echo in these walls and also through our lives. Lord, please draw us together in mission so that our efforts will always benefit the people of Abita Springs. May we, the Board of Aldermen, have the patience to make correct decisions that will provide Abita Springs with continuous and stable improvement concerning the matters brought before us. We pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Mayor's announcements. First one is project updates. We're going to handle some of this through the reports by the chairman, but we'll talk a little bit about the sewer plan that's moving forward and looks like their date of sometime in April, isn't it, Dinet? 2026 that they'll be through? We picked a color for the tank, which is kind of a greenish, the tank color, I forget, but anyway, it's a nice color, blend right into the woods behind it. The other thing that I wanted to give you all a little heads up about, and I think we sent it to all the Aldermen, in reference to the water well, we were out doing our daily maintenance, which we go to the well every day. And the shaft was running, the well was filling the tower, and there was some clacking noise. So we called Griner and they came out and Griner Drilling sent their crew out. They found some vibration on the ground, which leads them to believe that it could be the pump. There's a submersible pump, it's like 150 feet down, and it's got barons on it, or the pump could be going bad, or the barons could be going bad or whatever. But their recommendation was that they come in and they pull that out, assess it, fix it if that's what it is, and then stick it back in the ground. Except the fact that they found some soil that was being pumped up as well, so it caused them to instead want to do a camera of the entire shaft of the well, which is 2,180 feet or something, the whole depth of the well, 2,180 or something like that. Which, that's their recommendation to us right now, and it's what, you know, we need to do. They said that the sand could be coming from the screen at the bottom, which could be replaced, which we had to do on the well over here behind us when I first got in office as well. Or it could be something else, you know, but going down there and having them look at it, they're the professionals, so that's kind of where we are with that. We do know that when they pull the pump out of the well, it's a three-day stint that we have to deal with without having that well online. So there's a couple of things that we've been working on. We started working on a connection between us and Water District Two, which we're, you know, we're working with that. They're down 36 toward Covington, and they come this way almost, not to Cruz de Maco Road, but they come to...
I'm sure yours.
Rose. Yeah, they come to Rose Street. So that's not real far for us, and it's a good thing for them, it's a good thing for us. If we'd have a connection, that would help. They have two wells and their tower is 250,000 gallon tower, where ours is only 150. So we could help them as well if they had to do something, if they had a well go down or break or whatever, they need to do some work. So it's one of those cooperative endeavor agreements that we'd like to talk to them about, so we're working on that as well. But just wanted to give you all a heads up, this is a normal maintenance thing that, you know, it just happens, never, you know, we haven't had any sand come out of there, you know, to any extent. This well back here actually had a lot in 2019, so we had to have that one pulled out and a new screen put in. So we're pursuing that, so that's a big thing. We'll keep everybody posted. We got to get the report from Griner, we got to, you know, there's a bunch of things that have to happen first before we can make any moves, so. Anyway, that's about the extent of my announcements. Okay, let's go into public hearing. This is, oh, that's right, I'm sitting there looking at it going, yeah, I covered that. What?
Cover it.
The Christmas market, you want to cover it? What?
Eric.
Eric, you have that on your report?
Yes.
Okay, you can handle Christmas market, Eric. Let's go into public hearing. Hearing instrument 2025-11-01, the ordinance of the Board of Aldermen, the Town of Abita Springs, amending the operating budget of revenue and expenditures for the year beginning January 1, 2025 and ending December 31, 2025. Dinet, you want to, who's going to talk about that? Y'all want to? Okay.
We discussed this a little bit at our last meeting, but for Alderman Kontois and Alderman Tomplay, you were out. It was just about the amendment that we have to do because we had reduced the expenses associated with the capital outlay for the wastewater treatment plant. And then subsequent to that, we got an invoice for $1.6 million because we were, you know, we got the tank installed and that was a big portion of the expense. So we need to address increasing that budget to reflect that increase in addition to an invoice that we got for $592,000 that we're going to have to pay before the end of this year. So we're making these adjustments so that we don't go over budget.
Okay, anybody got questions?
Yeah, amendment number two, will we bring in that 100% of that revenue in 2025? The 7.386.
Do you need that revenue?
Correct, in 2025?
I believe we will. We just, so we just received the payment for the $1.6 million yesterday, so we'll be receiving that portion of it, which increases the revenue for that portion. And we submitted pay request number five to Water Sector Program, which was the 592,000. And it usually takes them maybe three weeks or so to get that money back to us, so we hope to have that before the end of the year.
How much have we brought in year-to-date?
What's that?
How much have we brought in year-to-date?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I had sent those pay requests to you about two or three weeks back, and that had all the totals on it.
Look, Ev, I just wanted to make sure that we're going to make this number, we're going to collect it, and then obviously the expenditures are equal to the revenue, which is going to be...
Yeah, I mean, if it doesn't come in before December 31st, it'll be within the first week in January, and we may have to make a budget amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Are we sure we're going to get that money? How can we be sure that they're going to give it to us?
They've approved giving it to us.
Oh, they did approve?
Yes.
That's for the 5 million, isn't it?
It is.
For the 5 million.
Okay.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience, comments, questions? You good? He's good.
So no comments, we close the public hearing? So I'll entertain a motion to close. First, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, public closed. Roll call.
Here.
Alderman Patterson?
Here.
Alderman Kontois?
Here.
Alderman Saucy?
Here.
Alderman Tomplay?
Here.
All are present.
Okay, call for any agenda modifications? Hearing none, we'll move on from there. Motion to accept the 2025 town council meeting minutes. Have a first and a second. There you go, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, good, thanks. Reports, Chairman Alderman Boudreaux, would you like to start?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So the mayor covered most of this well situation. We do know that that well is in a sand formation, and so we may want to have somebody look at that more often, maybe even on at least a semi-annual basis or something to test and see how much sand we're getting out of there, because if that filter at the bottom does break, which the sand will erode it, then it'll get the pump, you know, so I don't know what they're going to find out, but I think it's a good thing they're going to run that camera, take a look and see what's wrong with that thing.
Wait a minute. We do do annual pumping tests on both the Highway 36 well and the town hall well, and those pumping tests will, every year, determine and let us know if there's any increase in organic matter coming up from that well. As a matter of fact, that was one of the things they did while they were out there doing the inspection for the vibration, is they went ahead and did a pumping test, and that's when they noticed that there was an increase of that matter coming up. So that is done annually, we are checking that well, yes, sir.
That's a good thing.
Right, and when we did the well in the back behind here, they did the same thing, and they said that if they ever get, there's a cutoff point where they can, they'll say, well, you probably should have this twice a year rather than just once a year if you're pumping a lot, but...
Yeah, that sand's moving through there pretty quick. It acts pretty much like a erosion thing, so...
Sand blaster.
You know, afterward...
It can really cut that metal.
After what Mayor Curtis said, Alderman Boudreaux, this well with, is it District Two?
Yeah.
District Two, it's a double-edged sword. So we just submitted to Baton Rouge for a new well. If this well's going down, then obviously we'll have to replace that well. If it's repairable, and we can repair it, it's less than a couple of million dollars, the new well costs 3 million?
Three and a half.
Three and a half million. If we can tie into District Two, having the capacity that they have, would Baton Rouge look unfavorable to us for giving us money if we tie into that? So it's a...
It's one of those...
That was a consideration that we took in. I'm sorry. So we've had several discussions on this, and it is a consideration, but we feel like municipalities should stand on their own, and there should be no reason that the state should look unfavorably to us if we continue to pursue funding for a secondary source that, so that we do not have to rely on a neighboring community to provide our residents with water. It is advantageous that that opportunity is there, but we should be very self-sufficient within the town and not rely on that. So that secondary source well is still something that we will seek from the state, and we will explain to them why our reasoning of that, so that this town can and should be self-sufficient.
No, and we should, just obviously water throughout Louisiana is a major issue...
Yes, sir.
...right now, and all municipalities and hospitals have to have a backup system. I'm just concerned that if this well does go down, we need to put a new well in, or they're going to give us, you know, if we can get the money from Baton Rouge to replace that well and not get the second well connecting to the District Two in the interim, may help us for the next few years, so.
Right, and I will tell you that their behavior, the same people that are dealing with this, on the sewer, obviously they gave us $5.8 million to build a new sewer plant. They know we have a pumping station that's pumping to UIL right now, but they still want us to get our plan online. So they do, municipal independence is important still, so I think the thought is, is that we'll be okay. That's, you know, I understand your concern, it's a great concern.
Yeah, I was going to, I'm glad you said that because, but it's still going to be beneficial if we were able to connect to the District Two, just in case for anything, but absolutely we should have a secondary source, as we've needed that for a long time. As a matter of fact, it's a law, you have to have it, but we've kind of skirted that along the way, you know, so whatever we can do to come up and have a good, strong secondary source, that's one of our most important utilities is water, so, yeah, we hate to lose it, so. I think that's all very good, what you're approaching with that, so.
Give him two minutes, please.
Well, this inspection and at least a brief repair caused a break in service for the public.
The inspections you've been talking about, are they going to cause a break? Three days, thank you.
Not a full loss of service, no. Still have a water supply.
We'll have a tower.
The pressure generated by the tower.
So that would be a typical boil water for a couple of days?
Probably, yes.
One more thing, what's the update on our water tower, on the repairs for that?
So that expenditure for that, to repair the water tower, is in the 2026 budget, so we do not have any funds right now allocated for that project. We are hoping that, knowing that the well may be down, that we can possibly do these projects in conjunction, which mean that we would either need to allocate some funds in 2025 or get the 2026 budget passed and expend those funds in 2026.
We're just a few days from 2026, so...
Yes, sir. It's a very crunch time right now.
It's crunch.
So to kind of touch on what Alderman Saucy brought to the table, yeah, they could look at it and say, well, you have a Plan B, you don't really need it, but I'm going to tell you now, dealing with grants and stuff like that for the last several years, anything they can consider a regional grant, so if you have a, if you have an agreement with Water District Two, and there's not going to be a one-way valve on this, you'll be able to send water both ways. So the way they was going, they would look at this is they're going to say, okay, well, yeah, you have a Plan B, you're getting water from them, but if we invest here, if they have a problem, we could feed water back to them. So not just helping this municipality, but also the other water system, you're covering, you're basically giving insurance to twice the amount of people, so they, they're more apt to look at that aspect of it than to just, well, you're working off a Plan B and you're fine, we're not giving you the money. They're more willing to invest in regional projects that cover a bigger area. So it could, you know, they could look at it and say, Plan B, yeah, they have a Plan B, they're doing fine, but if we do this, it's a larger investment for a greater number of residents, so that's going to take precedence over them saying, well, your Plan B is good, you're just, you're out. It is.
Two has two wells or one?
Two.
Two, they have two, and they're, the one that we would be feeding off of is off of Lo Davis, so it's fairly close to town anyway. It comes up, it comes up United Church Road and feeds into the nursery suburb.
So Water Sector Program awards points for consolidation. If you combine two water systems into one, they have a maximum of $5 million that they'll allocate for your system, an additional $5 million if you take on an additional system and consolidate those systems. Dinet and I were having a conversation about, you know, how, what, if that would be a good idea for us to even explore those situations or, you know, combine some of these services. And water is an area where the town, we want to retain that business. We want to retain the water business because it helps support the sewer business, and, you know, calling it a business is an interesting way to reflect upon it as a service to this community, but we also have those funds obligated. Those funds that we receive, that revenue that we receive is dedicated to pay off our bonds. So to consolidate the system and abandon the system and allow Water District Two, say, to take over and provide the water services to this community would not be advantageous for the town of Abita Springs at all.
No, that's what I'm saying. If you have a CEA with Water District Two as a backup, I don't think that's going to necessarily hurt you as much as the ability to help them out in a situation. So you're really, you're really, with the CEA, you're going to have insurance on both systems is what you're going to have, and I think the benefit of that would be more apt for them to say, we'll help you out, so.
Okay, you want me to finish my report?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so Dinet tells me it was 60 work orders, and I'm sure with the oldness of the sewer system that we have plenty of work orders coming in on those types of things, so the water, I know we had two water breaks over on the other side of 59 over there, and they worked on that today, so a lot of this old utility system is really needing a lot of maintenance. Of course, like the mayor talked about, the wastewater treatment plant that's moving along, they're still going to, as far as I know, they're still doing first of next year, March, April, and so that was good. So anyway, that's pretty much it, we're pretty much on the top of what's really happening here, and there you go. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman Boudreaux, Alderman Patterson.
Okay. We'll let y'all know the mayor has signed an agreement with JAC Construction out of Franklinton for $28,980 for the Town Center Statue Foundation for the... There we go. Now we got green light, go, okay. So they should be starting to get that done so that we can get the statue placed, the fencing redone, and the vegetation put out. So it should be, once they get it poured, it will move pretty quickly, so that's already in the works. As we've already mentioned, the DEQ, Clean Water State Revolving Fund, has approved the $3.75 million loan application for sewer improvements, which would be the Abita East Forest Main and the Keller Street Lift Station. Bond Council now is reviewing everything, is completing the legal due diligence on this, and preparing the opinion that confirms the town's legal and financial capacity to repay the loan, so we're hoping on that really, really hard, we'll get all that through and get the bond approval, and we can go ahead and get that.
Is there any estimated time for that?
April?
Yeah, everything's like April.
Wow, we don't hear about anything until April.
April 4th.
The bond council works with CPA to get financial reports. You will hear some things in between now and then. We hope to have some definitive answers by April, but there are resolutions that need to be passed, and there's publications that we need to post in the farmer to inform the people of what it is that we're doing, and the bond council will guide us along through that process.
Okay. Any other questions about that? On October the 31st, the town submitted three requests for capital outlay to the Division of Administration for Sewer Improvements in the amount of approximately $4 million, for water improvements in the amount of $5 million, and for drainage improvements in the amount of approximately $600,000. So we got three of them out there. What we would ask is, those of you in YouTube land and everybody around here, write to your representatives and tell them that we really, really need this. We have applied many times, and either it's been pulled or it's been denied, but, you know, I think it's about our time, you know, it's our time to get something. So we really need this, you know, our systems are old, we've done all we can do to keep them running, and we do it every day, but it sure would be nice to draft something new. So let's see if we can push through and get something new.
Can I mention something about that newsletter? I don't know if you've had an opportunity, Alderman, to review the email that I sent. There was a newsletter attached, and it outlined the dates as to when capital outlay would be considered. It says that the governor's recommendations for what he wants to put on capital outlay most likely will be submitted no later than March 16th. If it's put on his recommendations, the chances of it being approved are very high. So if you can reach out to the governor, the Commissioner of Administration, Taylor Barris, the Chief of Staff, any of those folks, to see if you have any ability to influence them, and you can refer to that newsletter, and it'll outline those dates and, you know, what the recommendations are to increase our chances to get that funding.
So we got a mail campaign we got to get with.
In person is even better.
In person is even better, so. And finally, yesterday, the town engineer finished the Water Sector Program grant application, which was submitted for review for a new water well for the town in the amount of $5 This particular application is quite lengthy, requires a lot of engineering material in it, and it has to be stamped by a engineer, because they want to know that it has been researched, vetted, you know, has all the plans, layouts, and everything. At the end of the day, this application was 300 pages. That's a lot of work for Leann and our engineer to do, to get this application in the hands of the people that need to look at it. So, you know, I want to thank Leann and our engineer for their diligence in getting this done, because it's a very important application, as we can see now that we're having a little rattling in the earth, so let's see if we can get this through, hopefully, but it just...
Do we ask for a waiver for the match?
Yeah, we asked for a waiver for the match, and so we'll see if we can get that, but just the multitude of documentation that you have to provide for an application, 300 pages is, seems a lot, so. But thank you so much, we appreciate everything you do behind the scenes. Just thank you. All right.
Alderman Kontois.
All right, I just have one planning update. The next planning and zoning meeting is December 18th. If you haven't been participating, you might want to come out, it'll be one of the final discussions before January 29th meeting, at which time, planning and zoning will see whether or not they are satisfied to vote formally on the new regulations for the zoning regulations, and from there, it would be passed forward as drafts for review by the council. So, you know, there's some things that have been changing each time they meet, so if you're interested, come on out, and the more the merrier.
Okay, Alderman Saucy?
The only thing that was new is what Alderman Patterson brought up regarding the grant. We saw the August financials at the last meeting or two meetings ago. The 3.7 million is something that we had discussed and voted on submitting a couple of months ago. So EJ Boudreaux, Alderman Boudreaux, and I continue to communicate with people in Baton Rouge, and I've requested a dinner, hopefully we'll have it in the next week or so. Hopefully, we'll have it in the next week or so with some of the representatives in Baton Rouge so we can put a little pressure on it to get to the governor so that this will come to fruition and to the betterment of the town of Abida Springs. And that's all I have.
Alderman Tantoyes.
All right, for health, excuse me, for human and community services, no community services information at this time. Law enforcement, I'm going to let Deputy Marshal Wells cover that in a minute. Community events, the Halloween event was well-attended this year at both Level Street and the park. Thank you to all the volunteers that helped our event staff and to all the sponsors and everyone who came out to make that a great event. The Christmas Farmer's Market will be held this Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We will have Santa and a photo booth and crafts for the children and entertainment free for all to attend. Weather permitting, we will hold the annual tree lighting at the park at 6:00 p.m. this Friday. There will also be caroling and a handbell choir by North Shore Traditional Music Society on the stage.
If the weather doesn't cooperate with us, we will be moving the caroling and the handbell choir to Town Hall. We already have that contingency plan in place. Unfortunately, the tree won't get lit in front of everybody, but it will get lit. So anyway, so everybody, and then Fire District Eight will also be participating Friday evening and on Sunday selling hot chocolate. So make sure you guys come out and see them, too.
Thank you. That's it.
Y'all are having a chorus line, too, aren't y'all? Y'all are singing and dancing and all that as well? The eightettes. All right, good. Okay, Marshall's report. Deputy Marshal Wells is going to be giving that report. Marshall Bonet is, if you don't know, his mom's got some issues going on, so keep all of them in your prayers. He's not feeling really well either, and his wife's got two kidney stones, I believe. So it's like when it rains, it pours, you know? So, yeah, so Officer Wells will grab that home.
From 8:4 of 25 to 9:07 of 25, we've had one arrest. It was a traffic arrest for driving under suspension, speeding, and no proof of insurance. The subject was booked into the parish prison. We had approximately 15 outside agency assist with Acadian ambulance, the Sheriff's Office, and District Eight Fire Department. We had one summons arrest for controlled of dangerous animals and leash law. We had 20 traffic accidents, two of which were major. We had a head-on collision involving two vehicles on Highway 59 near Walker Street. And then we had a vehicle that breached the law office at 435 and Main Street and caused extensive structure damage. We had a traffic incident that had happened by the pavilion where a subject in a described as a black Ford F-150 with a tonal curve had came through the pavilion yard and knocked over a wooden post and damaged the faucet near that wooden post. We had 50 traffic stops, 31 of which were traffic citations. We had no juvenile cases nor school incidents or warrant issued. Any questions?
Did we get the tag number off the F-150?
We looked at the...
Video?
The video, and we were able to identify it as a Ford F-150, but being the illumination from the tag, we're unable to read the tag number for the vehicle.
Structural damage?
Do what now?
Structural damage?
Just the post, and the vehicle supposedly has a little bit of front-end damage to the front bumper area.
This is for either of you. I've heard that one of the deputies resigned. I wonder if they confirmed this, and if so, could you elaborate or comment?
That's better directed to the mayor.
We did have Officer Brown turn in his letter of resignation, and I don't want to talk about why, you know, it's irrelevant. What's to go another way? Anything else? Yeah, he did. He did yesterday. No, he didn't resign till yesterday, so, I mean. Okay, thank you, Officer Wells. Okay, so no new business. Let's move on to old business.
I just want to make one comment. I think we should give a shout out to Ron Blitch. We went from $80,000 on the statute, now we're down to $28,000, hopefully not to exceed $40,000. So thank you, Ron, for your extra efforts in communicating and keeping everything on track with LeAnn for the contractor to come in and get that circle completed. That's plants and everything?
No, that's just...
We're going to probably do it for half what we budgeted, which is great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure. Okay, old business. Number one, consideration of the adoption of instrument 2025-11-01, an ordinance under the Board of Aldermen of the town of Abida Springs amending the operating budget and revenue expenditures for the year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025. Any comments, discussion? None from the board? Anybody in the audience, anything there? So we need a motion to...
I'll move for adoption of instrument 2025-11-01, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen in the town of Abida Springs amending the operating budget and revenue of expenditures for the year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025.
Just, do we have a first? Do we have a second? Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We don't need to, do we need a roll call vote then? We do, okay, roll call vote, I'm sorry.
This is the vote?
The 2025.
Yeah. Well, in light of what's been said tonight and everything, I think I'll give my aye.
Alderman Patterson?
Yea.
Alderman Tantoyes?
Yea.
Alderman Saucy?
Yea.
Alderman Tantoyes?
Great, good. Okay, number two, discussion of the instrument 2025-11-02, the ordinance of the Board of Aldermen town of Abida Springs adopting the operating budget, revenue, and expenditures for the year beginning January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026. So that's the 2026 budget discussion. Open it up to the board.
We need to do a lot, a lot more work on this one. I'm not sure about this 26 budget, but I hope we got some time to look at it again before, and see if we're going to have anything like that needs an amendment or something before we vote on it. So I think we ought to just take another look at it pretty closely and see what's going on.
LeAnn or, I'm sorry, Alderman Boudreaux, are you finished?
Yes.
LeAnn or Danette? Oops, sorry. So section 14 goes from 14 to 20. How's that possible? Roman numeral Xi-V, then XX.
I got section Xi-V, then section...
XX.
XV.
Where do you see, I've got XX.
That would be correct.
Is there a line number?
Oh, I'm sorry, 108.
No, we're on page four.
So the capital projects revenue versus capital project expenditures, do we anticipate, this is part of the $5 million grant that we're applying for, correct? This revenue?
Essentially, could you...
That's 19. The breakdown here. So if you want a breakdown of those expenditures, the revenues...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so are we talking about the expenditures on line 108 or the section 103, the revenues?
Correct, both, 103 and 108. So where are the revenues coming from?
We gave you that last sheet in the pamphlet that we handed out, and that does break down the projects that we have in the 2026 budget. We projected 3 point, very small numbers, 3.6 to come for remaining funds of the wastewater treatment plant. As we explained, that is a number that was derived prior to the amendment. That was what we were looking for. It is in flux, depending on when we get the revenues and when we get the expenditures, but those will be reflected accurately when we get to that point. The Keller Street Lift Station is here at a project of 1.4 revenue and expenditures. The Abida East Sewer Force Main is in here at 1.8 revenue and expenditures. The Highway 36 Water Tower refurbishment is at 192,000, and that all totals up to the 7.1 that you see on there. Some of that is coming from grant. The water well is coming from existing funding. And we are hoping that the Keller Street and the Abida East Sewer Force Main construction will come from either the existing loan approval that we're working on or capital projects funding outlay.
So some of this is a wish list? Some of this is a wish list that we get approval?
Well, we have the loan approval that we're working on with the Bond Commission right now for the Abida East and the Keller Street. We certainly hope that we get capital outlay and we don't have to use the loan funds, but it's not a wish list. It is a capital project that needs to be done in 2026 if we...
We have to have the funding, though, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I don't have questions, but I just did want to make a statement that we spent several hours reviewing the budget as a special meeting. We sent questions beforehand and requested various information that was supplied to us. So everything that we have asked for clarification on has been responded to and is reflected in this, in my opinion. So I don't have any further questions at this time. You know, I would love it if we didn't have to spend this much money on all these capital outlay projects, but, you know, they are required, and hopefully we'll get some of this back in the grant funding. But that withstanding, it's still reflected what needs to be done and the time that needs to happen.
Okay, anybody else have any discussion? We can go public? Go ahead, Stu.
Yeah, I'd like to go over those three points that I brought up during the previous meeting briefly for a start. The first one was about not charging, I think it's wrong to charge the public for actually saving the town money, which is what happens on the credit card. I think the way to look at it, just briefly, is that the town isn't paying for the credit card company. The town is not paying for convenience for the customers. The customers are already paying the credit card company for stuff. But instead, it's paying for accounting and clerical services that the credit card company is providing to the town, and it's doing it very efficiently. So it's actually saving money for the town, and we shouldn't be charging extra to the public. The second thing I wanted to bring up was the cemetery fund. You'll notice in the budget that only 1/3 of the cemetery costs are being paid for out of interest. But at some point, that interest is going to have to cover the entire amount because there won't be any more lots to sell. And so the cemetery fund itself has to be built up to about three times roughly what it is now, and that always seems to get kicked down the road. At one time in the past, the cemetery fund got raided by the town to take some money, and now they're paying it back, and even that tends to get kicked down. But I think that in this budget and in all future budgets, until it's built up enough, there should be a significant amount put into the cemetery fund from whatever other funds we have in order to build that up to a level at which it's self-sustaining. Now, the third thing is about the amount that we charge for gas. Now, we just had a water rate study done, and I know the amount we charge for gas fluctuates with the price of gas. But looking at these numbers, it appears that we may be undercharging for gas and essentially subsidizing it from elsewhere. And I have one question on line 57. Operating expenditures, operating expenditure, I really don't know what that's intended to mean. If someone...
57, what page?
So the operating expenditures of the cemetery are mainly...
No, this is not the cemetery. This is a separate, this is, I'm talking about gas now, and so it's in the utilities.
So the operating expenditures of the utility fund are those items that are generic across all of those funds and not specific to a certain service that we do, such as insurance? If we have insurance on our buildings, that is a general operating expenditure of the utility fund, not specific to, because our maintenance barn is split between our gas, our water sewer, our...
So what...
...garbage, if we store garbage over there. So those types of expenditures like that are what makes up the operating?
Would it be fair to say that there's three other categories, that roughly 1/3 of that amount would actually be something caused by the gas portion?
No, sir. The purchase of the gas is actually included in the gas expenditures that you see there. That's how we would do it if we did a rate study, yes, sir.
Okay, so if that's the case, then 1/3 of that, 1/3 of that 200, so that would be about 90,000. And if you were to add that to the gas expenditures, you'd find that the expected revenue is actually less than the expected expenses for this. And what should be, it should be approximately 4% higher because that's what a municipality normally gets when it provides utilities. And that would be about 29,000. So essentially, line 44 ought to be about $29,000 more than line... than line fifty-four plus roughly a third of that, that odd line fifty-seven. And so, I think we need to do a rate study of gas because it looks to me like it's significantly too low.
Yes, sir. We, we have a, a budget in the 2026 that will allow us to use a firm familiar with doing these rate studies, not only to look at our rates, but also to possibly get grants for our gas system that needs some repairs and maintenance because of the aging of the equipment. So, we do have in the 2026 budget, a, a item to allow us to do that rate study and hopefully do that grant application. It was pointed out in the information that was given to the Alderman that right now purely from gas revenues and gas expenditures, there is only a two percent profit there and that is not enough to cover their portion of the operational expenditures that are split between the different services that we provide. So, it is something that we looked at and considered, but we cannot proceed with any type of rate increase on our gas without having a rate study.
Okay, those are my three points, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Of the position that if the town is having to cover the fee with the credit card company, that the town should absorb that?
Yes, I am, very definitely, because you're, you're looking at the fee the wrong way. It, it's not something we're doing for the customers, it's something that we're doing for ourselves in reducing the administrative, the accounting, the clerical burden on the town. So, the town saves money every time someone does this and they shouldn't be charged extra because of that.
What, what would, what would happen if we said, well, we're not going to take credit cards and we're not going to take checks, so all we'll take is cash? Then it becomes a problem for the...
It, it would be far more expensive. You wouldn't be paying, you wouldn't be seeing in a nice line item because you're getting this good accounting from the credit card company, but you would be spending money on, on your employees, on errors, on just time taking.
Yeah, well, I, I get that. I guess, I guess what, what I'm thinking is that, you know, there seems to have been a, a switch in this whole credit card policy. It used to be, well, it's the cost of doing business. Well, then it becomes, well, no, it's not a cost of doing business. When you use a credit card, you, you gotta pay the three percent fee. You go to a restaurant...
Now, you'll only see some companies doing that, generally ones who can get away with it because they have a monopoly. It, it's not because it's something right. Right, in, in most states, it's against the law to do, to charge it extra. Right, I, I believe that the reason restaurants do it is to keep their menu prices lower because they have to make the money somewhere and that way they're hiding the, the increase. But at any rate, most states, not ours anymore, say it's illegal and they say it's illegal because it's wrong. It's, it's because it looks easy to take. It's, it looks like it's low-hanging fruit, but it's not. These fees are actually paying the credit card company for doing something it does very well, which is electronic accounting, which saves on the manual work that would have to be done by the town's clerical staff.
Aren't we, aren't we paying Tyler Tech to put in the credit card reading and all that machine that we have to pay for? I mean, so, so the town's paying for that, that part? So, how's it, I mean, you know?
The, the entire process is saving the town money and to charge ex, I mean, to, to ask the, the customers to pay extra to save the town money is just wrong.
Okay. I'll let you go, Stu.
Thank you, Stu, appreciate it. Anybody else got any comments on the discussion of instrument? Do we need to, Leanne, do we need to vote on this instrument? No, just the discussion?
We will have a public hearing on September 15th.
Right.
And the 2026 budget will be presented for adoption at that meeting so that we can comply with state law and have a 2026 budget in place before the end of the year.
End of the year, right.
So, if there's anybody that has any questions or concerns or issues, we hope that you would take this opportunity to communicate those.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Correct, all right. Let's go to the open section, which is the final section here. Go ahead.
Thank you. That Sandra Slifer with Keep Abita Beautiful, I just want to give people a heads up so that when they're doing their Christmas decorations, that if they have old Christmas tree lights that do not work, to save them, that we are doing an e-waste recycling event on Saturday, January 10th from nine to eleven a.m. will be right outside the town hall annex and that we'll be working with Capital Area Corporate Recycling Council, CACRC, we worked with them last year, that the St. Timothy Parish Government also works with them. They're an excellent company, you know, in terms of doing e-waste. So, if you've got old iPads or tablets, computer hardware, accessories like mice, keyboards, speakers, if you have laptop computers, telephones or telephone systems, security systems, cell phones, cable boxes, networking, circuit boards, processors, LCD monitors, cables of all kinds, whether they're for telephones or computers, uninterrupted power supplies, printers and fax machines for a fee, DVD movies and video games, gaming consoles, console or copiers, again, fees do apply, television sets. So, these are the ones that are CRT-type televisions, again, a fee does apply to those. So, not everything is free to recycle, that we do not, we are not accepting household batteries, appliances or furniture, light bulbs, fluorescent bulbs, the cathode ray tube type monitors, if anyone still has those. Yeah, we still see them as hazardous waste that the parish conducted on November 1st, not as many, but they're still out there, that no media, media, so tapes, CDs, floppy disks, no DVDs or CD players or VCRs, no cameras, no stereo equipment, no speakers. Again, you do the speakers for your computers, but not just stereo equipment. That fluorescent ballast, no, don't bring them, please don't bring them, toner and ink cartridges and then your portable navigation systems like Gemini and TomTom, those are not accepted. I have the list that, it is on our Facebook page under events. I'm gonna give a copy to the town to post by the utility office so that they've got it, but again, I just want to give people a heads up, you know, that this is a company that is certified for everything, you know, that they're trustworthy, that you can, you reliably give them, you know, your laptop computers, your desktops, whatever, that again, if you know how to strip, you know, if you know how to scrub the, the hard drives, do that, but if you don't, that CACRC is certified and that they've, are monitored and, you know, they just do a great job. So, you could, you know, you can feel comfortable canting them off. It's gonna be right outside on Live Oak Street in front of the town hall annex and that is gonna be on January 10th from nine a.m. to eleven a.m. That in addition to doing the e-waste, we'll also be doing another recycle what. So, if you've got health and beauty products, if you've got oral care products, you know, there's a whole list of things, tools from six different manufacturers like DeWalt, Irwin, you know, there's a whole list of companies, but, you know, the normal things that we're collecting and recycle what. And we've also started getting, taking clean, empty aluminum cans and plastic bottles during our recycle what days. So, at any rate, you know, just wanted to let people know, mostly because, you know, we know you're gonna be decorating soon for Christmas and I know that, you know, I always plug in the lights before I use them because I don't know what happens over, you know, over the season, but they don't work sometimes. So, at any rate, don't throw them away, bring them to us and we'll recycle them.
Okay, thanks, Sandra.
Cause I'm from China.
A couple of bits of, of news, both bad and good, that hadn't been brought up. Good news is the, the museum has its holiday village on display now, so that'll be for the next few weekends. People have enjoyed coming and taking a look at that every year for quite some years now and it's back. The other is some sad news that I think deserves to be mentioned here for the public is the town has lost one of its citizens, OJ Poncy, and he, he, he was very public spirited. I, I know he, he, he worked for the town and volunteered and, and he even ran for mayor one time and I, I'd like everyone to keep the family in his, in their thoughts. Thank you.
Stu, at New Year's Eve, they're gonna have a memorial at his home.
And if you check on Facebook, you'll see some details about the type of memorial that they plan to do. It's not quite a jazz funeral, but it's a little different than a typical funeral memorial. Thank you.
Okay, one last thing real quick. I know there's been, and Alderman Cantoy's reminded me of, there's some Facebook concern about the lights in the trees. We've gone out and looked at the lights, the ones in the middle tree coming in right before the curb is on, the one before that and the one after that in the library has lost power somehow. So, Cleco is gonna be contacted, gonna come out and see if, you know, world, the squirrel maybe gnawed through a line or something, I don't know, we don't know what happened, but something cut the power to the, to the light. So, yeah, Cleco's, Cleco will be helping us with that here pretty soon and hopefully we can get it going before the, yeah, Christmas. So...
That's a good thing. People really get upset about that because they come into Abita thinking it's a wonderland coming through there. Everybody seems to really like that, so...
Yes, the, the curb's really dark, people say. I had somebody tell me today, well, if they put their headlights on, it wouldn't be dark. I went, oh, okay, I never thought of that, but... It's right, it is, it's, it's a nice look. Okay, hearing no more discussion from the audience, I'll entertain a motion to close. First?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?